I'd like to call the USD 305 School Board to order, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any corrections or additions to our agenda tonight?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to request under item 12 that we add an executive session for negotiations, please.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as corrected? Thank you Carol, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you Andrew, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, so move 7-0. Moving on to our recognitions and presentations with Jennifer Bradford-Fernan.
Thank you. The You Make a Difference Award is presented to staff members whose exemplary actions support students, colleagues, and the mission of Salina Public Schools. Recipients of these awards receive a lapel pin and a handwritten note personally delivered by a Board of Education member. Patty Colahan, Central High School Para-educator. Colleagues and students know Patty for her reliability, sincerity, energy, and positive influence. She does whatever is needed, handing out cough drops, granola bars, to help students feel better and find their own successes. Thank you Patty for making a difference. Nikki Gamber, Husner 4th grade teacher. Nikki puts in extra time required to plan meaningful hands-on projects for her Husner students. This year she volunteered her time to choreograph the Flash Mob Dance that four schools performed at Central High School. Thank you Nikki for making a difference. Susan Olson, Oakdale Para-educator. Susan has gone over and above the call of duty in supporting students. Even when faced with a great deal of responsibility, she handles the situation with grace and dedication. She cares deeply for her students and gladly goes the extra mile. Thank you Susan. Beth Rush, Oakdale Speech Pathologist. Beth took on the extra responsibility of planning accommodations for a student. She created materials and plans to help her student be successful. As a result, the student did not miss out on critical instruction and structure in the school day. Thank you Beth for making a difference. Anna Ingram, Opportunity Now Para-educator, interpreter. The special education preschool team has frequently asked Anna to translate for Spanish-speaking families. Repeatedly, she easily establishes a rapport, and her positive attitude and sense of humor puts them at ease during the appointments. Thank you Anna for making a difference. Max Iceland, Physical Education Teacher, and Rachel Augustine, Music Teacher, Coronado. Because of Rachel and Max's willingness to help while the librarian instructs students, the school library remains open and its many resources accessible during a busy timeframe each week. Thank you for making a difference for Coronado students. Now we're going to recognize Superintendent's Excellence Awards if Mr. Hall will please join me. This evening, our first group of awards goes to students who qualified for Nationals with Business Professionals of America at South High School during the State Leadership Conference. Kaysha Edgerly is their sponsor. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? And if any students are here, if they would please join Ms. Edgerly in the front. Otherwise, we will go ahead and announce those names. And parents, oh, no students, okay then. Let's see. The following students qualified for Nationals in California. Pierce Carey, Senior, 2nd place Extemporaneous Speech. Tim Croker, Senior, Financial Math and Analysis. Amanda Dempsey, Sophomore, Parliamentary Procedure Concepts. Megan Mong, Senior, Kansas Merit Scholar. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you.
Thank you so much, pass it on.
Thank you so much for what you do.
Often we have students who are involved in other activities on the nights of the awards. Our next group of awards goes to students in South High School Swimming who qualified at State. Dustin Bergart is their coach, please join Mr. Hall in the front. And will all the swimming students please line up as well?
South, please.
Rory Bowles, Senior. Rory is a member of the 200 Freestyle Relay Team. Zeke Kazicki, Senior. Zeke is a member of the 200 Freestyle Relay and 100 Backstroke. Trey Lorenson, Senior. Trey is a member of the 200 Freestyle Relay. Rafe Young, Junior. Rafe is a member of the 200 Medley Relay, 500 Freestyle, and 400 Freestyle Relay. His consideration time was accepted in the 200 Freestyle. Colin Truie, Senior. Colin is a member of the 200 Medley Relay, 400 Freestyle Relay, 100 Freestyle, and 100 Backstroke. Ben Wyshar, Senior. Ben is a member of the 200 Freestyle Relay. Zach Kazicki, Junior. Zach is a member of the 200 Medley Relay, 200 Individual Medley, 100 Butterfly, and 400 Freestyle Relay. Brendan Borkadine, Junior. Brendan is a member of the 200 Medley Relay, 50 Freestyle, 100 Freestyle, and 400 Freestyle Relay. Congratulations for a fine showing at the state championships.
Thank you Coach. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Had the one with the hat on. Pierce Carey.
Pierce was for Business Professionals.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Business Professionals of America.
Good to see you here.
I had to run for tennis practice.
And our next group of awards goes to students in Central High School Swimming who qualified at State. Dustin Bergart is their coach. Will all the swimming students please line up? Zach Ketcher, Senior. Zach is a member of the 200 Medley Relay, 200 Freestyle Relay, and 400 Freestyle Relay. Eldon Testkinen, Sophomore. Eldon is a member of the 200 Medley Relay, 400 Freestyle Relay, 200 Individual Medley, and the 100 Butterfly. Peyton Char, Junior. Peyton is a member of the 200 Medley Relay, 200 Freestyle Relay, and 400 Freestyle Relay. He was a state qualifier in the 100 Butterfly. Eric Nilsson, Senior. Eric is a member of the 200 Medley Relay, 400 Freestyle Relay, 50 Freestyle, and 100 Freestyle. Antonio Benuelos, Junior. Antonio is a member of the 200 Freestyle Relay. Andrew Rutherford, Junior. Andrew is a member of the 200 Freestyle Relay. Will you please allow the Board to congratulate you now?
Congratulations again. Good job. Good to have you all there.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Great work.
Our next group of awards this evening goes to students in Central High School Wrestling who qualified at State. Shannon Peters is their coach. Will you please join Mr. Hall and will all Salinas Central's Wrestling students please line up as well? Donovan Will, Sophomore. Donovan had a season record of 31-16. He was 2nd team AVCTL All-League. Dayton Will, Senior. Dayton had a season record of 34-4 with 117 total career wins. He was 1st team AVCTL All-League. Dalton Peters, Junior. Dalton had a season record of 38-3 and was runner-up at 170. He had 104 career wins as a junior. Dalton was 1st team AVCTL All-League. Kyle Truie, Junior. True, thank you. Kyle had a season record of 38-7. He was 2nd team AVCTL All-League. Jack Helvey, Junior. Jack had a season record of 29-8 and placed 6th at State. He was honorable mention. Mike McMullin, Junior. Mike had a season record of 36-7 and placed 4th at State. He was 1st team AVCTL All-League. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you.
Congratulations, great job. Guys, amazing. Congratulations. Outstanding, really proud.
Thanks for all you do.
Great job.
Our next group of awards goes to students in South High School Wrestling who qualified at State. Gary Seibel is their coach. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? And will all the students please line up as well? Brenner Vogon, Freshman. Martin Putbries, Freshman. Alan Heberly, Sophomore. Blaze Albers, Senior. Brett Hilkeman, Senior. Alex Parker, Senior. Alex placed 5th at State. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you.
Congratulations. Great job you guys. Appreciate all that you've done.
Congratulations.
You guys have to big a hand.
Our next group of awards goes to students in South High School Bowling who qualified at State. Colin Carlson is their coach. Will you please join Mr. Hall in front? And will all the students line up as well? The girls' team took 1st place qualifying as a whole team. Maria Salinas, Junior, 2nd overall high series. Kaitlin Baker, Sophomore, 6th overall series. Casey Arnold, Junior, 11th overall series. Christina Greer, Sophomore. Michaela Talbot, Sophomore. Shelby Wood, Sophomore. The boys' team had 3 individual qualifiers. Kyle Miller, Freshman, 4th overall series. Michael Neese, Freshman, 9th overall series. Dane Banata, Freshman, 15th overall series. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now.
Wonderful job this year.
Good for all that information.
So proud of the boys guys.
Good jobs.
Good job.
Job well done.
Good job.
It's unbelievable. I might do that. I haven't told him.
Yes, I think so. And while we're kind of transitioning, I just want to say, first year of bowling I thought went very, very well. The kids represented themselves very well. We had girls' team made it to State for the first time in the school district's history and had one young man bowl the perfect game in competition this year, Kyle Miller. So outstanding. Kyle, raise your hand. That's the perfect game, so excellent. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our bond projects update with Mr. Upson.
I've never bowled a perfect game.
Me neither.
In fact, I've never broken 200s.
I've broken 200, but not much more. 220s.
Okay, good evening, bond project update. We can see the green bars moving across the screen there. We do have our projects that we talked about last time, Coronado and Oakdale. Construction contracts are signed for those 2 projects. And we're working on pre-construction conferences, setting those up, and construction beginning. We'll talk about Cottonwood yet today. Metalark Lakewood, we'll go out for bid real soon. And things are progressing along very well. Coronado had a groundbreaking ceremony. We've got Oakdale's tomorrow. I was not there to attend, but I was told it was a very, very nice event. So we've changed the photo and put a little groundbreaking action in there. We got small hard hats and everything, so it's pretty fun. Then Oakdale's groundbreaking is scheduled for tomorrow. Cottonwood, we'll be talking about the bids for Cottonwood today and hopefully get approval today for that. We've got a groundbreaking scheduled for the 2nd of April here with tentative construction beginning sometime in April. Okay, Metalark and Lakewood, we'll go out for, or bids will come in and we'll do bid opening for Metalark on the 2nd of April, and then Lakewood will be on the 3rd of April. And those are both set to go in front of the Board on the 14th of April for approval. South Middle, advertising will go June, the end of June. And then we'll have bid opening on 24 July for Board approval on the 8th or the 11th of August. Okay, South High, South High is in design development right now. We had, we obviously had schematic design approval in front of the Board. They're in design development now. They've had their first round of design development meetings. And that's a pretty much an all-day or more than that set of meetings where each of the departments comes in and looks at the floor plan. And there's a lot of interchange, exchanging of ideas between the designer and the faculty for each of the departments. It's kind of a back and forth process. The floor plan is mostly established. We talk a lot about how the classrooms are laid out, what they're next to, how that, there's a lot of talk about how that's gonna, how the layout is gonna work for the faculty. So there's kind of 2 things that are happening. One is the designers getting ideas about furniture solutions and how the faculty wants to teach in the space. The other thing that's happening is the faculty's getting an idea of what the new building is gonna look like and starting to think about how they might use that. So there's 2, the faculty are learning along with the architect as they go through that. We haven't scheduled the 2nd round of design development meetings for South yet. But that'll be, it's typically about a month worth of time between the 1st and the 2nd meeting there. So there's a lot of exchange going on back and forth right now. We're ferreting out some of the problem areas, which is normal, that you didn't quite capture all of it in schematic and you gotta kind of look and fix that stuff, and that's all kind of by design and is good. Central High School, we've got the Board of Education approval set for the 14th of April. The schematic design has been presented to the school and we're in the back and forth process now of tweaking that thing and taking into account comments from faculty and staff on that. So again, we're back and forth on that, and what we hope to do is get the design team to, everybody give us the thumbs up before it comes in front of the Board on the facility. Okay, our support buildings. Hagaman and Opportunity Now and Salinas Adult Ed are gonna, all 3 go together, talked about that before. Those will go advertisement on April 6th with bid opening on the 1st of May and hopefully to the Board on the 12th of May. And then Kennedy, Heartland is, will advertise on the same, or advertise a week later, April 16th. We will do bid opening on the 7th, and it'll go in front of the Board also on May the 12th. Okay, Phase 2 Husner, a lot of dates here. We are we are into final design development on Husner. So we're starting to work on construction documents, development there, and then advertising in June. And Schilling, we had kickoff, design kickoff at Schilling. And looking for the next schematic design meeting tomorrow. And that, so that process is working kind of along with the rest. I don't have, this is old data on the budget review, I apologize. And then Stewart and Sunset are set April 1st for Stewart kickoff, and Sunset will be some point in early May. We have yet to schedule that kickoff. And once we do that, that'll be all the projects in the bond that will have been started. So that's kind of a big, big milestone. Are there any questions?
Chris, given that a number of these are small total budget additions and so on, will the same major construction companies bid on those, do you think, or how do you see this happening?
We are anticipating different groups of bidders. And we saw that actually with Lakewood. We had a pre-bid conference. Remember, we had a big pre-bid conference early on and we invited everybody who had any interest in the projects, and we kind of talked big picture. Once we send a project out for bid, we hold another bid conference for people that are seriously gonna bid on the project. And we go to the school and we walk around and we ask questions, and there's a lot of dialogue that happens between the architect and the prospective bidders. We saw different folks at Lakewood, for example, than we did at Coronado and Oakdale. So it has to do with the size of the company and the bonding capacity of the company. And I think that when we get into our support buildings, we'll see a different set of bidders yet again. And that's good because we're hoping that we'll keep it local and kind of keep, have everybody have a part in the bond program.
Thank you.
Any other questions I can answer?
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the approval or consent agenda items, which will include the minutes of the March 10th, 2015 regular meeting, personnel report, treasurer's report, investment report, journal entries, approving our copy paper bid for 16,800 reams of 8.5 by 11 white copy paper to Contract Paper Group in the amount of $38,908.80. Approve Stuart Elementary's request to apply for a grant with the Americas Farmers Grow Rural Education in the amount of $10,000. Approve our 2015-2016 School Resource Officer Agreement at a rate of $273 for each day each officer works for the district approximately $136.50 per half day. Proposed amendment to Architectural Contract with DMA Architects PA in the amount of $154,400. Change in Assignment of Architect Contract for Schilling Elementary School from Beaverley Architects to Jones Gilliman Rens. And our Beverage Pouring and Snack Vending Services Agreement with Mahaska doing business as Pepsi Snack Express effective July 1st, 2015. Can I get a motion to approve these consent agenda items as presented?
I still move.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, so move 7-0. Moving on to our public forum, if anybody would like to address the Board at this time, please do so. And I kind of got razed for not giving enough time, so I'll kind of wait a little bit longer. Okay, still don't see anybody, so we'll move on to our action agenda item, starting with the Cottonwood Construction Bid with Mr. Upson again.
We have, the bids are in front of the Board members, okay?
Yes, actually you have it in the Board, in your Board Packet. So if you go to the 2nd page behind the narrative, you'll see the bids. You have the bid summary sheet.
Okay. So we opened bids at 2:00 PM on March 13th for Cottonwood. We had 3 responsive and responsible bidders, and the numbers came in very favorable for us. It appears that the low bidder was Walt Harmon Huffman Construction in the amount of, well, their base bid amount was $2,598,000. And with alternate 1, which was the parking on the northwest 3 lots that we, the district had purchased, that's that alternate. And then the east side of the building, the construction of a canopy that covers kind of the walkway into the east side of the building to kind of match the one that's on the west, and the amount of $63,300. So the total base bid plus alternate 1 and 2, low bid was $2,839,000. It is recommended that the Board approve the bid of Walt Harmon Huffman Construction in the amount of $2,839,000, which includes the base bid and alternate number 1 and alternate number 2.
And where are these guys from?
Walt Harmon is from
The Wichita area.
Kechai.
Kechai. Just down the Wichita area.
Yeah, just one of the interesting things to me, obviously, is the difference in the estimates on parking alternate 1. $50,000 difference between weans and walls. How does that happen, just for curiosity?
One of the ways that it can happen is that a construction company might self-perform more than another company might self-perform. So you might have a company that specializes in what we call flat work, which is parking lots and streets and paving. And they self-perform that work themselves, therefore they don't need as much margin there to do that. That's one way that that can happen. Sometimes contractors just low bid Sometimes contractors just low bid it to try to get the bid, and they think they can work it out in the end. But there is, you'll notice that there is a fairly good spread on some of these alternates that you'll, we'll continue to see that, and some of it is a mystery and you just don't know, but it is, you know, and we've seen in the past that alternates can swing the low, the low bid, too. So in this case, I'm not sure exactly how it happened, but that's some of the ways that it can happen.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Marian?
I have a motion.
Oh, that'll work.
Madam President, I move that we approve the bid of Waltz Harmon and Huffman Construction Incorporated in the amount of $2,839,000, which includes the base bid and alternates one and two.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Dr. Pla?
My second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion on this before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, so move 7-0. Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll move on to our second action agenda item, which is our 2015-16 textbook rental fees with Mr. Hall.
Yes, Madam President, in, in each of your board packets, you have a schedule of textbook rental fees from 14-15 and what we proposed for 15-16. I would request that the Board of Education approve the textbook rental fees for 15-16 with no changes from 14-15. Those are at kindergarten level, $45, grade one through five, $60, middle school, $60, and high school, $100. And just, just let you know, we, we adjusted the high school rate last year when we implemented Chromebook one-to-one, it used to be 60, we increased it to 40 to help offset that cost. So I would recommend to the Board of Education that we approve the textbook rental fees for 15-16 at the same rates as 14-15.
All right, can I get a motion? Marian?
So moved.
Okay, I've got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, all right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this before we vote?
Just one thing, I just want to note, I know that we're looking at fees, and it may seem like a lot, but I, I took an online class, a history class, and it was a world history, and the book used was right at $100. I mean, it was just unbelievable, so books are going up everywhere.
Okay.
$220, I think, for new, I think is what it was.
I'm sure. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, same sign, so move 7-0. Thank you. Moving on to our last, which is 15-16 participation fees.
Yes, and comparable to the textbook rental fees, I'd request to the Board of Education that we approve the participation fees for 15-16, consistent with what they were for 14-15, no change from the 14-15 schedule. This is a one-time activity fee, irrespective of the number of activities that, for which kids are involved. It is a sliding scale for students who qualify for either free or reduced lunches, and you also in your, in your packet have a listing of those activities which qualify under the participation fee. So with that, I would recommend that, that the Board approve the 15-16 participation fees as presented.
All right.
So moved.
Nadja, okay, can I get a second? I have a motion and a second. Any, sorry, any discussion on this before we vote? Seeing none, please raise your hand for those in favor. Same sign opposed, so move 7-0. Thank you. Moving on to our discussion agenda with Ms. Xline, proposed textbook adoptions.
What I am projecting is actually in your packet, and so if it's easier for you to just look in, on your screen, that is certainly fine. I'm here this evening to just visit with you about the recommended textbook adoptions. We do have a recommendation coming to you from the biology departments, Algebra I and Geometry, Middle School Science, that includes grades six through eight, Spanish I through IV, and Sports Medicine. I want you to just understand the process that we used before I actually go through what the recommendations include. We started with teachers from all buildings that were being impacted by these curriculum adoptions, having representation at the table. We did some curriculum revisions, and then after that, we did develop review criteria. And each resource then was reviewed against that, the same criteria. And so I have the review sheets, and you're welcome to look at those if you'd like. We have, then the group that actually did the recommendation wrote a recommendation paragraph, which was included in your board packet, and you saw what the teachers actually wrote about the resource that they selected. And then finally, I did have them identify exactly what should be ordered in order for them to best be able to deliver the curriculum. And so the quotes that you see are actual, the figures that you see are actual, the actual numbers of what we will be spending for the resources, for exactly the number that we're ordering and what it is that the teachers feel that they need. When we did the review criteria, we started with the board policy, IFR, which is the textbook and instructional materials policy. And that policy, which I'm sure you know, speaks to things like effective education for all students, the factual content in the materials, does the book have practices to develop critical thinking and communication? So that was the first criteria that the teachers used. And then they also added standards in curriculum, and how did the different materials line up with our local curriculum. Next, they looked at effective instructional strategies and the kind of pedagogy that was included and recommended in the book, the kind of vocabulary development, reading strategies, what kind of instructional lessons were included. And then finally, they added some additional teacher criteria. I want to talk through each one of these, because it really was fun to work with the groups of teachers that did these adoptions. With the biology, what we ended up doing is, they did curriculum work last summer, an extensive amount of curriculum work, and all the biology teachers from both buildings were at the table when we were doing that work. And so it really was neat to see them working through the standards and making sure that they had the content just like they wanted it. That work will continue this summer. So the review team actually looked at the work that had been done, reviewed the standards, and then jumped right in. They developed that review criteria and added their teacher review facts, and then they took the books out to all department members. They actually looked at three different books, and every department member got a chance to review those in both departments. They did review the functionality with the Chromebooks, spent quite a bit of time doing that, and to be perfectly honest, that really, I think, was the tipping point on this particular selection. They, they had two that were kind of a toss-up as far as content, and the functionality with the Chromebook was much easier to navigate from a student viewpoint on the text that they're recommending for you to adopt. On algebra and geometry, we've been doing curriculum work now for several years in high school math, and we will continue working this summer. All department members met on two different occasions in this room to look at five different options for algebra and geometry, and boy, was that a, an interesting process as they were digging through all of those books. We had represent, every staff member from the math department at South and Central, and then the algebra teachers from the two middle schools joined us as well. So we spent two of their planned periods going through the books, and they narrowed down to three different texts that they all felt comfortable with. Those three then were looked at by some representatives, and, and they, each department picked representatives that they felt comfortable making this final selection. And immediately, as they started to really hone in on those three books, one of them, they said, no, this is, this is not what we need. We something, we need something that's more of a balanced approach. And I was, I was very pleased to hear that, because I think that that would reflect the will of our community. And so what they did then is spent a tremendous amount of time looking at the standards, looking at the mathematical practices, looking at, is the textbook asking kids to construct arguments? Is it asking for precision in mathematics? And the recommendation that they are bringing forth is Kindle Hunt. Middle School Science, little different approach here. They had representatives from each one of the middle schools that came together and spent an extensive amount of time here at the district office, working on curriculum and then reviewing text options. They, they did spend last summer some time doing curriculum work, and will continue doing that this summer, but they, what they are recommending is the CPO science. And they did check for functionality with Chromebooks, because they were very hopeful that at some point you would make the decision that we would look at Chromebooks at the middle school. And I, I actually asked them about the functionality, and they, they were happy to say that, yes, they had indeed really explored that. So the book that they are recommending actually has some very good hands-on science that are very strong with the science and engineering processes, kids actually engaging and doing science like a scientist would do. And so the teachers are, were very excited about this particular series. And as I looked at it, I thought, I'd like to take this class, too, so. For Spanish, we had representatives from all four buildings, because we do teach Spanish I at the eighth grade level. And the, they spent a tremendous amount of time working through the world readiness standards for language, for learning languages, that are actually put out by all the different foreign language teacher associations, and they did extensive curriculum development work. They, they were a hard, hard-working bunch. And when they were done, they spent time reviewing three different options, and the option that they're bringing forth is Hooten Mifflin, and they were very, very satisfied with that as a strong option for an adoption for levels one through four. So some good cohesive resources there for Spanish. And then finally, the last, the last recommendation is for Sports Medicine. Sports Medicine, this is our first adoption for Sports Medicine. This is a CTE course. They have, we have been teaching this class with, with no resource, and part of that was there just wasn't anything available. And so they were really excited to find something that they feel is a good match for the content that they need to teach. Both teachers who teach the course were at the table and spent quite a bit of time reviewing the CTE competencies that KSDE has, and making sure that our curriculum reflects those competencies, and then in turn, that there were resources in the book and activities that they could use to deliver that curriculum, since this is a relatively new class. They, in all instances, the recommendation is for classroom sets, and that includes middle school. The middle school people said that they, they would not be sending a text home for kids to actually read on their own, that it would be used in the classroom with support, and so all of the recommendations are for classroom sets. When you see the digital texts, what we did was purchase enough digital texts. Typically, when you purchase a textbook, so on biology, 152 textbooks, each one of those comes with a digital license, and so those 152 textbooks would be divided between the teachers, and they would remain as a classroom set. If a student needed a textbook for some reason, we would have some available for them. If the internet was down on a particular day, we would have some available in the classroom. But that, we, we did want to purchase one classroom set for each title. And then we purchased additional digital licenses, is what our recommendation would be, so that each student would have a digital copy that they could access via their Chromebook. And so the, when you look at, in the biology, the 571 will actually have that number of licenses plus the 152 that come with the textbooks. And those would be six-year licenses, that at the end of six years, we, we would have to go ahead and purchase maybe additional years' licenses if at that point we weren't ready to do an adoption. Okay? With that, I am certainly open to questions, and would be happy to entertain anything that you have to ask and get the answers if I don't have them. Yes?
Just to be clear, did you say that the CPO science textbooks do have electronic capability should this board? Okay.
Yes, they do.
Just as a follow-up from that, and they have that capability now, if students wanted to and they wanted access to that, could they, could they log on at home and get the digital version or not? Do you know that?
In some, in some texts, and I, I can't answer that question specifically, I could get the answer to that for you, but in some cases, there are some digital resources that are available at no extra cost. In many cases, that you have to purchase them. And our recommendation at this point would not be to purchase them, because we, not everybody, not every child would have access to them, but we wanted to make sure that if we get to a point where every student would have access, that we would know that it would work. So, but if, I, I can certainly find out if, what is available free of charge with what we're purchasing.
Other questions?
First off, just as a parent and having seen a lot of this stuff, I really like your proposal, because I do think this is the way to go in the future, is have the books for a backup, but rely primarily on the digital. But my main question was, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, is I assume we're saving money, for example, on the biology books by primarily relying on digital as opposed to going all regular books, is that correct?
There are several ways that we're saving money. One, when you buy the package of the, and I, I don't know that this is the case in every instance, but when Diane and I have had conversations about this, when you buy the pa, the combination of the textbook and the digital copy, it is more expensive than just buying the digital copy, okay? And so, yes, in that way, you know, to just get, and the, the digital copy's kind of thrown in when you buy the textbook. So in that way, we're saving, oh, it's about $10 to $15 per book, that way. The other thing is, with our, like with our current biology books, we are having a significant number of those rebound every year right now. They, they're large, and just the wear and tear on carrying them back and forth. So in, in both of those ways, we would be saving money.
Well, part of the reason I asked that is a week or so ago, there was a letter to the editor in the Salina Journal, someone, again, proposing that we need to go back to regular books and pens and paper. And first off, I think the person, probably although well-intentioned, probably has a misunderstanding of how kids learn today compared to how they used to, but also, I think it's important for the public to understand that there was an upfront cost on the Chromebooks, but every time we do one of these adoptions, we're also saving money that's offsetting some of the cost of the hardware that we have paid upfront. So that was the purpose of my question, really, is to give some kind of an idea of how we are being good stewards and the purchases are cost-effective.
Any additional discussion? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And you did say that you have copies of these in your office, so at any time between now and the 14th of April, any of you or all of you at any given time are certainly welcome to go into Ms. Xline's office and peruse these textbooks.
They're on the counter.
They're on the counter. Ms. Trickle's already been there.
All right. Moving on to our school board committee reports and upcoming dates of importance, and oh my, do we have a bunch. Starting with our groundbreaking events, Oakdale is Wednesday, March 25th at 10:00 AM. Cottonwood is Thursday, April 2nd at 10:00 AM. Lakewood Middle is Wednesday, April 22nd at 10:00 AM. Meadowlark, Thursday, April 23rd at 10:00 AM. Opportunity Now is Wednesday, April 29th at 10:00 AM. And Husner is Wednesday, May 13th at 10:00 AM. On Sunday, May 3rd, we have a retirement reception and recognition at Lakewood at 3:00 PM. Sunday, May 17th is our graduations at the By Center, starting with South High School at 2:00 PM and Central High School at 5:00 PM. And Saturday, May 23rd, we have the Chamber Legislative Meeting at 8:30 AM. And Thursday, May 28th, we have the SAEC graduation ceremony at Central High at 7:00 PM. Marian, do you want to start us off with our reports?
Yes, Saturday, I went to the legislative forum and was enlightened. Prior to that, a week before, we had a meeting at Smokey Hill, which I could not attend, but we did hire Chris Bottellog, and I wanted you to know that. We had interviewed two people, and Chris rose to the top.
As the new executive director of.
As the new executive director of the Smokey Hill.
Hey, Marian.
Last week, Phil and I attended the Parks and RAC Advisory Board Meeting, and I thought the highlight of that was probably as we received a presentation on a prospective art project at the old Hawthorne School, which was kind of interesting.
Right.
Nadja?
Went to the legislative forum also on the 21st Saturday, and, and some of it's the same-o, same-o, and some of it's enlightening. Went to Salina Education Foundation allocations meeting yesterday, and awarded several 21st Century Grants, and the teachers have already been notified, and they're ecstatic about that. Attended Coronado Groundbreaking yesterday morning and saw all those little shovels and hard hats and bows on the shovels, and the kids were just elated, and very proud of themselves for being chosen to be the representative of their grade level while they got to throw the dirt. So that was great.
I have nothing for your points.
Yeah, my favorite, I think my favorite quote of that morning was, okay, don't throw the dirt on me. Don't throw the dirt on each other, right here, right in the spot, right, right here.
And they all did quite well.
And they did.
They did.
Carol, do you have anything?
Nothing in particular. Also attended the Chamber Legislative Meeting.
Also, attended the Chamber Ledge and Coronado Groundbreaking, good event.
Okay.
And one other thing that happened at the, I started to say the dog park meeting, the Parks and Rec meeting, was that they're continuing to get data on the dog park. So, and yesterday, I was happy to personally deliver a check for $500 to the Salina Education Foundation, so that was good.
All right. And last but not least, our superintendent's report.
Okay, just to, and follow up on a few items, and I appreciate your comments about our groundbreaking yesterday, another groundbreaking tomorrow, as Chris shared earlier at Oakdale. Those are always exciting. I know that with Coronado being the first one, it was kind of like, you know, a nice anticipation, everybody waiting to get that first one kicked off. And so, I think now, we're going to start seeing a number of them coming back-to-back. But it's always exciting for each individual school, and it's great to see parents come out, it's great to see not only the kids involved, but there is a lot of interest in those. And so, I appreciate all the efforts of everyone, Jennifer's office, Mike's office, in terms of getting everything pulled together for that. Those aren't always easy to orchestrate, but you always want to make sure that we create memorable events for the folks most directly impacted. So, those are good. Cottonwood Elementary, as Chris shared, their groundbreaking is April 2nd at 10:00 a.m., and so, we look forward to that as well. A few other items I would like to share in conjunction with those, and I thought it would be good to share this information because I mentioned this briefly yesterday at the Coronado Groundbreaking, but this board has always committed, since the bond issue passed, to doing what we can to not only encourage our local contractors and our local vendors to bid, but to do what we can within the statutory bid law to try to keep our dollars local. And so, I thought you might like some information about, okay, where are we now? Three bids finished, where are we? And I will say that Cottonwood Elementary, as we shared, and the board just approved that this evening with Walls, Harmon, and Huffman Construction out of Keachai in the Wichita area. But as far as subcontractors, they have three local subcontractors that they are utilizing for completion of that job. And so, it's good to see even our general contractors, who may not be local, utilizing local contractors to do the work. At Oakdale Elementary School, we approved a low bid of Ron Fowles Construction out of Manhattan. Again, they're not a local contractor, but they are also using three local subs as well. They're using local subs for the mechanical, the plumbing, and the electrical, as well as the floor covering. And so, it's nice to see, even though it may not be a local contractor, they are using local subs to perform the work. And then, of course, you know, Coronado approved the local general contractor, Busboom and Rao. And not only did Busboom and Rao get the overall general contractor, they're utilizing six local subs to do the work. And so, and again, to reiterate, all the work that our local architects are doing and the design of these buildings, and even partnering with the high school buildings as well, you know, this board is making a concerted effort to ensure that we try to keep these dollars in our local community. We understand the importance that that has to our local economy, and so, we're going to continue as we move through with the rest of these buildings to encourage our local contractors to be part of this process. And I'm very, very pleased also with the bids that we're getting thus far. You know, we're under, I don't know, the first three, we're under, considerably under the estimated construction budget in all three. So, we're getting some really good bids at this point in time. You know, legislative update, there's a lot of things we can talk about that since our last meeting. Since that time, we had the feverish activity that was held on the block grant legislation that was approved by the legislature, first in the House and then voted to concur in the Senate, and the governor did sign it. A lot of conversations, had multiple conversations with Representative Durex during that entire process, had multiple, had conversations with Representative Johnson, had conversations with Representative Clayes. And in the end-
And Senator Arpke.
Well, again, in the end, it was voted to have been approved within the House. And it was a vote to concur, centered in the House. And really, when it got to the Senate, it was a vote to concur. So, that being the case, I tell you some things that happened on that with FY15, FY16, and FY17. Fifteen, current year, we're still seeing a loss of about $951,000 in budget authority, about $300,000, $300-plus thousand in capital outlay state aid, and the remainder of that in local option budget state aid. And so, with that, we're going to be utilizing, you know, we're going to kind of see where we are at the end of the year. I've already had the opportunity to meet with Budget Director Lisa Peters to put together a plan, not only for this year, but for the next two years, based on the block grant legislation that's been approved by the legislature. We're confident that depending upon where we are at the end of the year with expenditures, in combination with utilizing reserves if necessary, that we'll be fine for FY15. Again, for FY16 and 17, overall, I know that the legislature's touting the fact that they believe this to be an increase in educational funding. But I will say that our increase for FY16, 100% of that is for capers. Okay? So, yeah, I guess it's depending, depends on what you call going into the classroom. I don't see that going into the classroom. FY17, again, it is increasing funding overall, 75% of that will go to capers. And so, I think it's somewhat disingenuous to say that we're increasing educational funding when the majority of that will not make it to the classroom the next two years. What happens in those situations, I will say that new facility waiting is an issue. You know, that, and I guess now saying under the old finance law, which, you know, which was old for the last 25 years, but there was a piece called new facilities waiting. That was anytime, if you had, if you passed a bond issue and you're maxed at your local option budget, which we are, 30%, every time you open a new building, the state would provide two years of new facilities waiting based on the number of students attending in those new facilities. Those were purely operational dollars, had nothing to do with the bond, had nothing to do with building the buildings, but they could be utilized, and they were put in place by the legislature to assist with offsetting the cost of opening a new building, to allow more time for districts to phase that into their budget, so to speak. That was the part that went away with the funding formula being replaced with the block grants. However, that being the case, Representative Clayes, I had a conversation with him about this because it was a major concern for us. If you think about, we have 16 buildings, right? 16 buildings, every time a new building opens, we have kids in there, that's two years of funding operationally. And so, that would roll out all the way to 2020, pretty significant. From that standpoint, however, he was able to at least do an amendment that will give us one year of new facilities waiting for 16, 17 only. Our projections right now, based on our timeline, is we will have four elementary schools open in 16, 17. So, it appears that we will get new facilities waiting for the four buildings that we open in 16, 17, based on the number of students attending in those facilities, in the new parts of those facilities. So, we are getting part of that, you know, not what the old finance formula would have allowed us to receive on the operational side. Virtual funding was also changed with the new block grant, and that's important for us as well, with our adult ed program, and I'm talking about the diploma completion program. We had, I believe, 58 FTE this year, which is significant on the virtual side. And we're going to come back to the board to republish that portion of the budget because that was much higher than what we had anticipated. However, that was based on the amount of time adults were attending. They're changing the formula on that with the block grant to be based more on performance. In other words, it's going to be based on total number of hours completed, not necessarily on hours that they were actually present and attending in that facility, or the amount of hours that they logged on to the virtual site. So, they actually have to complete hours, and then we get funding based on that. I think it's $900 per credit hour completed, is that correct, Lisa?
I think 933.
933, okay. So, those are some of the changes, the nuances of the block grant piece, and again, that's for two years. They put a sunset in there, it's going to sunset June 30th, 2017. The idea in mind is that between now and then, they will be writing a new school funding formula. And I kind of thought, you know, that was going to be a ways out, and they're going to get folks together and kind of pull them together, start talking about that, and doing their deliberate research, and looking at the impact on all the districts, and really putting their best effort to put the time and energy necessary to make that happen. And then, lo and behold, they already rolled out Senate Bill 294, and they already have a plan in place. And I am concerned, again, similar to my conversations with the legislators on the block grant, with the speed with which this is moving. Senate Bill 294, and I tell you, this is so news, introduced last week in the Senate, and no one knows the numbers. No one really knows what the impact this will have on everyone's individual school districts. And yet, I've heard that they're already wanting to debate this and have conversations about this, is in committee or on the floor, Lisa, do you know? I mean, this is how new it is, is no one really has the details yet, but-
I think it's tomorrow, they're going to be in committee.
To do, they're doing hearings on it tomorrow. And this was just rolled out last Thursday, I think it was.
Yeah.
You know, so it's a similar situation to what we had with the block grant, is they roll it out and then they do hearings two days later. You know, so there's not a lot of opportunity for folks to go testify, to even see what the impact will be. I will say that some of the, and I've looked at some of the information, the KASB provided testimony on this, I believe written testimony on this, and, or actually, I think they were actually there in president, that was before the Senate Committee on Education, March 20, that would be today, they provided this today. Had a chance to read through theirs. On the surface, it doesn't look egregious. They do have pieces in there about basing things on districts' poverty level and awarding funding based on that, not awarding, providing funding based on that. I think there's some things that we need to talk about, okay? I think there's some things that districts need to have an opportunity to look at. There's a piece in there that's also tying funding to student success. And what does that mean? And Senator Arpke, at the Legislative Candidates Forum on Saturday, mentioned this, and it's interesting because he sits on the Senate Education Committee, so I think he knew kind of what was coming. But he based that on what students do after they graduate from high school, post-secondary success. And what does that mean? What does that mean? So, and with that, there's a factor that would be tied for every district based on where the students went after high school, what they did, did they complete the program, and then based on the amount of success would determine the factor which would play into their formula, in addition to poverty level and everything else. So, that's first glance, kind of what we're looking at. I know Senator Arpke mentioned that whatever it is, we need to make sure that it's tied outcomes. And I see that, I believe that's where the student success piece comes in. So, there's that factor involved as well. It is still so very, very preliminary that there's just not a lot of information on it right now. And so, suffice it to say, I know school officials are concerned about exactly what this means and the impact that it will have, and I certainly hope that it does not move forward with the breakneck speed that the prior legislation did on the block grant. So, my common message to our legislators, and I think as Board of Education members, if you contact them, if you would do the same, is, once again, slow down, take your time, and let's make sure that whatever we come up with, it's a school funding formula that's equitable, that's good for kids, all Kansas kids, and Salina kids, but all Kansas kids. And keeping in mind that every district is different, they're just completely different, every student's different. And so, we have to keep those things in mind, and we just can't rush through it and write something up in a week and a half. We can't do it. Okay? And so, we'll continue to send that message to them and slow down. I don't know if you have any questions or comments about that? Yes?
I have two comments. One is on the student success, and I guess I'm really looking at Mike as I say this, but at the post-secondary level, the greatest frustration we've had is you can't track a student. How do you track a student who moves to Pennsylvania and then moves to New York and goes to the community college? How would you find that information out? I mean, the sheer, I don't know, the expense of trying to implement something like that would be astronomical. It's just one of the greatest frustrations, and then students come back to school, because they just drop out for a year and then come back, so they end up being five, six, seven year students. The other thing is, and sometimes I get lost in all this legislation. We didn't have capers as part of our budget at one time, right? The state decided to implement it, then the state takes that money and gives it to us because that's part of our budget, and then we have to give it to capers. I just want to make sure that we keep those little chain of events in place because that's bizarre. I don't know if they planned it that way, but-
Well, and they did that, I think, four or five years ago. I remember when they did that because it used to be, I mean, they basically provide the dispersment to the districts and then turn right back around and pull it back to Topeka, because then it runs through our budget and they can count that as a state contribution.
We get that money for all of like one day, don't we? Isn't that how it works?
I think it's less than an hour.
Yeah, I was going to say, it bounces, it bounces right in, it bounces right back.
Now, we have all this money, you know? That's what's scary about it.
Well, I think in particular, as this relates to the cry for efficiency in school district operation, what you just said about trying to track down what happens, where is the efficiency there? How are we spending the money that they would like to have go into the classroom, as they say?
Well, plus, they're spending $3 million on a committee to look at efficiency at the higher education. I hope they don't come back and say, don't spend $3 million on the committee.
Well, another example of that is I know, and Lisa went and actually sat in on a hearing on new software for accounting systems and looking at the gap, because they're, one of the pieces of legislation out there is to require districts to follow the gap and not allow the gap waiver any longer. And that alone will increase-
Oh, my gosh.
... cost to districts. You might talk about that.
That's a part of the Senate Bill 294. Part of it is that we have to, of course, with-
So, they'll just get rid of K-MAG altogether, that provision? So, will that be for cities and counties as well, or just school districts?
It's just talking about school districts that I see. It just says, requires school districts to comply with generally subject county principles and fundamental-
How are these, how are these really small districts? My thought goes back to, like, the smallest district I think I audited is in Eskridge, Kansas. And I'm sorry, to be able to do a gap audit, you have to be a CPA or have a very high level of knowledge. I mean, I think we're very lucky to have Lisa here and have the resource to be able to pay somebody to keep up with that. But those little districts who just have, I hate to say nobody, but you know, they just have a bare minimum of experience, how are they ever going to be able to do that?
There was a CPA partner that actually gave some testimony that day, and he said, "I'm totally against this, but it will increase my fees by, it'll triple."
Oh, yeah, it's good for me, it's good for me.
Against it. So, that's how they're going to do it. They're going to take the expertise.
Now, I also want to just clarify as well, because, and I want to make sure that there's no, that folks within the, because there's been a lot of media and editorials and writing about the block grants and the impact of the block grants and the impact on the school system, the impact on our school district. And I just want to make sure, I reiterate with everyone, that this will have no impact in the terms of construction of our bond projects. We are moving forward, we're moving forward with All Day K. You know, we're fine, we will implement at All Day Kindergarten in 16, 17, that's been the plan, this will not change that. All the bond proceeds are in, and we're moving forward with those projects, the state aid, we are still receiving state aid for the building of all those projects. We're forced that we did, we were able to sell those at such premium dollars, so we have additional dollars to put back into the construction as well. So, we are continuing to move forward with our bond projects. The block grants and the school funding have very little to do with construction of our buildings and implementation of All Day K and Corentec and all that. Now, on the operational side, we're going to have to sit down, put together a plan, and I'll revisit with Lisa about what that's going to look like, and we have some good ideas that we will share with the board on our direction to go. But I feel very, very comfortable in terms of where we are from a financial position to get where we need to be. And we are in much better financial position than many school districts across the state of Kansas. And so, we're moving forward and with our vision, and we feel comfortable with that we're going the right direction. Now, that being said, what's going to happen with the new school funding formula, and what's it going to look like? I mean, at this point, who knows? I mean, I'm just not completely sure. Did you want to add something to that, Lisa? Okay. So, that's kind of where we are, and we're continuing to move forward. I want folks to understand that we are, this is not going to change the direction that we're headed. We're moving forward, and I feel very, very comfortable with that. Also, just a couple of other items. We have put in a plug for The Raising of America, which is a documentary that we're having a week from this evening at Kansas Wesley and Fitzpatrick Auditorium. It's a documentary, it's been sponsored by Slina Area United Way, Kansas State Research and Extension, and KU School of Medicine, and the focus is on early childhood opportunities and the impact that providing those opportunities has on economic development locally, at the state level, and nationally, and quite honestly, across the world. And the investment that maybe we need to stop investing as much in large corporations, take those dollars and invest them in early childhood education. And it's an interesting documentary, I believe, from what I understand, you can go on the website and see a little 10, 11-minute little clip on that. But they're doing the documentary at 6:00 p.m., and then I believe they have a panel discussion at 7:00. So, if at all possible, I would encourage you to come out for that. Again, that's a week from this evening, it begins at 6:00 in Fitzpatrick Auditorium.